This conference will now be recorded.
I'd like to call the September 8th, 2020 council meeting to order at 7:02 PM. Are there any additions or corrections to tonight's agenda? Susan?
Yes, there's something that came in our emails that I wanted to bring up tonight. Hold on, I'm looking for it, let me minimize this. I sent it out in an email a little bit ago, so I don't know that any of you saw that I wanted to talk about it. It's the League of Oregon Cities nomination to nominate our city for a cool project or program that the city has recently completed. It's due tomorrow. So, I'd like to have a brief discussion about that.
We can include that in new business then, Susan?
Or I can do it
Okay.
under topics from councillor, I don't know, I don't know if it needs to be formally added or not.
Why don't we put it under new business, I think would be the best thing. So, we could add it to new business tonight. And then, Josette, you had something to add about the walnut tree you wanted to add to new business tonight?
Yeah, so I need you guys to decide kind of the direction you would like staff to go regarding the walnut tree, and I sent everyone in their email a report that the Arborists had done in 2017 for reference, but yeah, we need to add that to new business.
Okay. Any other additions or changes? If not, would anyone like to make a motion to accept the two additions to the agenda tonight? The walnut tree discussion and the League of Cities, I guess, what is this, Susan, a contest for?
Well, nomination for a project.
Project achievement. Anyone like to make a motion to accept that agenda then?
I'll move.
Is there a second?
Councillor Webb will second.
Second's been made, thank you councillor. Stephanie, would you call the roll, please?
Councillor McNair. Councillor Allen.
Hi.
Councillor Wagner.
Hi.
Councillor Webb.
Hi.
Mayor Hobart.
Hi.
Motion carried.
Thank you, and there are no presentations tonight. So I'll move right into my mayor's report. Home Inventory Week proclamation. Whereas each September is recognized as National Preparedness Month, and whereas Oregonians have witnessed and experienced natural disasters in our own community, and whereas every community member may take active steps to protect their neighbors from natural and man-made disasters, and whereas every family and business in Vernonia is encouraged to take active steps to be financially secure after disaster, and whereas every community member is encouraged to make sure they are properly insured against fire, flood, earthquakes, and storms, and whereas every community member is encouraged to create a home inventory to include as part of their disaster preparedness kit. Therefore, I, Rick Hobart, Mayor of the City of Vernonia, do hereby declare that the first week of September 2020 be known as Home Inventory Week, and join cities across Oregon to encourage everyone to build a home inventory of their personal property and speak with an insurance agent to make sure they are financially prepared for disaster. And how ironic, we open up our meeting tonight with, in light of what's going around in the whole northwest part of the United States, actually, and specifically Oregon here. I know Dale and others have been monitoring the situation the last 24 hours or so, and it's become quite scary, especially for the people in Lyons and Malino and the mid-part of the state. They've evacuated, they're still evacuating hundreds, if not thousands, of people to the sale and fairgrounds right now, and it's a scary situation just to look outside and see the smoke probably from the Washington Fire, Dale, I'm sure. But it sure gets everyone's attention, and so I ask everyone to be vigilant and safe and and on alert, and most of all, to stay calm and strong, so we can take these words of the that I just read to heart, especially this coming week, because we're not out of it yet, so that's about all I have for my mayor's report tonight.
Can I ask a question?
Yes.
So, Home Inventory Week proclamation, and I'm looking at the letter on the next page which talks about being prepared, and I understand that they're talking about financial resiliency, but is there a reason, or do we have another proclamation, or some kind of discussion about just preparedness? I mean, making sure you have a go-bag, or making sure, I mean, there's that one that they have that has the list of if you have five minutes, 15 minutes, 30 minutes, or an hour, what you should do. It's a checklist of if you have this much time, this is what you should grab and throw in your car. So I was just wondering if if there's a reason we're not including something other than just the financial security in here?
I think those are very legitimate concerns and questions. In fact, my wife and I packed a suitcase last night and just put all our important documents in, and set those things that we wanted to take in case we got a knock on the door at 1 o'clock in the morning, we were ready to go, basically, with our passports and our tax stuff and really important stuff, and, you know, I've seen several comments on social media today about preparedness, and and I think we've talked about an evacuation plan for our city before, but we've never really come up with a committee to to lead the way in that, so it surely might be something to think about for the near future.
That's that's a fair statement, thank you.
Okay. I'm going to move on to councillor committee reports. I did attend a committee, a library committee, last Wednesday, and I just have a couple things really quickly to report on. The library board wanted me to thank the Vernonia City Council for their generous $2,000 gift, I guess, addition to their library book department, which we approved this year, and they're very grateful for that. The Friends of the Library Book Sale, or the Friends of the Library are having a book sale at the Salmon Festival on the 3rd of October in the Scout Cabin. And then the new, well, I guess the new fall library hours are, the library will be open Monday, Wednesday, and Friday from 10 to 5, and then on Thursday from 12 to 5, and then you can call, or I'm sorry, Tuesday from 12 to 5, and then Thursday you can call and make an appointment from 12 to 5, and then they are open on Saturdays from 12 to 5 now, so wanted to pass that information along, and that's all I have on the library board committee meeting. Are there any other reports on committee meetings? Okay, we're having our first senior board meeting this coming Friday at the new senior center building. And so, and that's at 10 AM. And so they're excited to have their first board meeting coming up. I will be attending that one also, so. Okay, are there any topics from the floor tonight?
I have one.
Okay.
There with me. I have a letter to read into the record.
Okay.
Dear Mayor and City Council, as this is a telecommuted meeting, I felt it would be best to send in my letter regarding the topic of our City of Vernonia and the CARES Act funds that were allocated to the city. As you may all be aware from preparing for this meeting, the $61,000 in CARES funds were specifically allocated to help aid our city in the recovery or economic impact of the shutdown. As such, to read and hear that only a nominal amount of the funds our city has received have been spent is more than surprising. Since moving here to Vernonia, the mission of my husband and myself has always been to encourage more small business owners in starting a shop to increase the vitality of our downtown area, which would in turn lead to a more prosperous and vibrant local economy. When the shutdown occurred, we ended up financially supporting more than three-quarters of the business tenants we house in order to keep them in place and not lose their shops. Some of these were self-employed small business owners, and some of these were deemed essential, and while they were allowed to stay open, had to unexpectedly hire extra labor in order to meet the health restrictions and requirements imposed upon them by the mandate. All were very adversely affected by the shutdown and later the restrictions, and we are not alone in this. We have been witnessing other cities and counties offering small business grants. For example, Washington County Business Recovery Center has both nonprofit, for-profit, minority, and more available to assist the businesses in the towns to recover or make it through these times, to ease the burden. That is the perfect example of where the CARES funds are making a difference. Will you do the same? Will you offer our local business owners a reprieve? Will you create a few grants available to them inclusive of self-employed business owners, as we have a number of them? I encourage you to take our remaining CARES funds and make a difference in our community by supporting local businesses with grants and funding assistance. Sincerely, Stacy Pelster.
Thank you, Stephanie. Consent agenda for acceptance? None. Consent agenda for approval? City council meeting minutes for August 17th, 2020. Any discussion?
I move to consent agenda for approval.
Motion's been made to accept the meeting minutes. Is there a second?
Councillor Webb will second.
Thank you councillor. Would you call the roll, please, Stephanie?
Councillor Webb.
Hi.
Councillor Wagner.
Hi.
Councillor McNair.
Hi.
Mayor Hobart.
Hi.
Councillor Allen.
Hi.
Motion carries.
Okay, thank you. Moving on to new business. Staff report, work session list. That can be found on page eight.
I brought this work session list to council per your request in, I think, early August. So before you, you have a list of work sessions you had identified that you wanted to hold. What staff is asking is, per your request, is if you would like to schedule any of these at this time. I know at the last meeting, which I neglected to put in here, you did note that you wanted to have the Reserve Fund Policy and Rate Review Committee future discussion early next year. I think the kind of deadline for that was in February.
Stephanie, can I add one more to that list? And it was a result of one of our previous meetings, and I wrote down a workshop on proper development of a comprehensive stormwater plan. It seemed like it was a pretty important topic that we could have a good workshop on that to develop a comprehensive stormwater plan. So, I just jotted that down, and I thought I'd bring it up tonight as another workshop item.
Does the rest of councils incur?
So I have a question. What is our expertise at developing a comprehensive stormwater plan?
I believe Josette might be able to answer this better, but I think it's something that we would have to hire a consultant for.
Because my recollection is that we had one, and I know that I've seen the City of Tillamook's, and it's a monster, and it's pretty, I mean, there is something to be said about having a comprehensive stormwater plan if we don't already have one. But again, I think it's something that requires an engineer or a consultant.
So, my thought on that would be, and I apologize if I'm overstepping, but my thought on that would be that the work session would be discussing if you guys wanted to include it in the budget next year to hire, to have that done. Maybe review what we currently have and decide, yes, it's 30 years old, we need to, I don't know how old it is, but it's time for it to be renewed or redone.
Go ahead, Dale.
Yeah, maybe the discussion would revolve more around of how we're going to deal, do we need a full stormwater comprehensive plan, or do we need to just go after and prove that where we're developing, and, you know, maybe a little more piecemeal, but maybe a little more cost-efficient method? You know, the Corey Hill Plan and the Louisiana Plan, wherever we think we're really developing or have the need. I mean, there's, we could sit here and talk about that all night, and that's probably why we probably should have a workshop of how we're going to proceed. Does that fall under council priorities?
I didn't hear you, Bruce.
I said, does that fall under council priorities?
It could.
Does anyone remember specifically what council priorities was?
That's what I was just trying to ask, Josette.
Seth or Stephanie? Council priorities was intended to be a work session where council as a whole decided what was the priority for staff to be working on at this time. So, it was the list, there's like the goal session. Do they want you working on?
So then not, it's probably not the same. Probably some thing.
How so?
Well, because discussing the city as a whole and what council sees and the different departments need to be worked on, and talking specifically about stormwater plan and getting into the weeds about that are probably two different things, correct? Because I don't think we're going to get into the weeds of everything you're prioritizing for staff, that would be a very long meeting.
I agree with you on that premise, but under the guise of council priorities, wouldn't that be when you discussed if the council as a whole viewed this as an issue? But they have a to me, it's kind of like you're getting the cart ahead of the horse. I don't disagree with the premise that stormwater is an issue. I'm quite likely believe it's a little bit more comprehensive than councillor Webb was trying to say. I know I suffer from the issue here personally. Nobody's ever talked about it, but we get flooding down here on the platt. If council priorities is going to be a workshop, what's the goal of council priorities then?
I, go ahead, Dale, because.
Well,
Go ahead, Dale.
Correct me if I'm wrong, but when we had the whole discussion around the administrator evaluations, there were some of us were wanting to move towards a new model, what the League of Oregon City puts forth, and this is what we're calling that, is to sit down with our city administrator, work through our priority list, get the back and forth realistic timing of completing projects, and we would also be looking at the priority of those projects, I mean, we all know the list is endless, and we can only tap you or so. That's where I see it going, is taking that list, and this is probably an item on it, but I can kind of see where we probably need to have a workshop on it to define it a little better for the city administrator to put, then have it and say, okay, we want you to tackle this. And then again, we're going to prioritize that against the other projects we have, so. Anyhow, that was what I viewed that council priorities was supposed to be, kind of moving in a new direction. Setting these up timelines and constant reviewing for the quarter. I thought we were talking about doing these about quarterly kind of reviewing.
Go ahead, Stephanie.
JR, is that you that called back in? Councillor Allen. Okay, I'm getting background noise from caller number six, so I'm going to mute them.
Stephanie, I called back in about five minutes ago.
Oh. Perfect. We're getting some background noise from your phone. Would you mind muting it while you're not talking?
I've been on mute. I'll go on mute again.
Oh, okay. I don't know what the deal is then. Carry on.
So, moving forward, I think our task tonight is to look at these these five items and decide what's most pressing, and if we even want to have a workshop on them in the near future, and the council probably needs to decide to maybe if you do want to work on one, to pick one and decide on a time and date to do that, so. Any councillors have any discussions on that, or any any items that they see that would benefit our city if we took them on right away?
Well, Mayor, this is Congressman McNair.
Yes.
Just looking down the list here, I think if you were going to be effective, council roles and responsibilities might be first in line. If we're going to accomplish anything out of that. I'm not saying we are. Then then I think council priorities would probably be next.
Okay, thank you councillor. Anybody else?
It's councillor Webb. So, yeah, I'd go along with Bruce on that. Get the roles and responsibilities out of the way, and again, the council priorities is, you know, if we can get them done in the first quarter to get started, and and if we're reviewing quarterly, they can change. You know, as long as we have agreement with staff, we can change those. It can be a fluid process throughout the year, so. And we could bring in this stormwater issue. We might decide we want to have a workshop and define it better before we make it as an item for the administrator to tackle.
The other two councillors?
I agree on the roles and responsibilities as being a priority. I know that we talked about meeting minute preferences as being a workshop. I'm not sure if maybe we can roll it into the roles and responsibilities if we have time, because I don't think it's going to be a very long conversation unless Stephanie is planning on doing a real training for us, which she may have in mind to do.
JR, are you okay with that? Well, does the council want to move forward and set up a workshop on council roles and responsibilities to start with?
Sorry, Mayor, I was on mute.
Yeah, JR. Have you heard the conversation?
Yes, I did, but I wanted to add that maybe we should look into this CARES Act a little more and see if we can get some funding out to some people that might need it in this community. I don't know if that takes all of us to do this, or, or if staff, something that they're, comfortable in, but looks like staff reached out for our help on this one.
Yeah, we're, we're gonna discuss that in, in, um, yeah, pretty, pretty soon, JR, the CARES Act funding.
JR, I have a question.
Go ahead, Counselor.
Um, this is for one of my, uh, fellow members. Um, JR, are you able to hear us when you, when you mute, or, um, I'm, I'm fearful that he, he's getting a meeting.
Can you, can you hear us, JR?
Yeah, Counselor McNair is breaking up, but I can hear you, Mayor, just fine.
I'm on speaker, JR.
We're working on setting up workshops, work sessions for these five items, council priorities, council roles and responsibilities. It seems to be a general consensus that the council wishes to choose council and responsible, council roles and responsibilities for our next workshop, JR.
Yeah, I heard that. I'm playing with that.
Okay.
And, and then we would move to council priorities.
So, do you want to make, anyone want to make a motion to move forward?
We don't, we don't need a motion. We just need you guys to decide what day you want to have that meeting.
Okay, that's what I thought.
I, I would recommend council, council roles and responsibilities be held at the nearest, soon as possible date, if everybody agrees on it. I'm open to any date.
Need an hour or two hours?
Probably two hours.
Probably.
Do, are you guys opposed to a meeting on a Tuesday? So, the next available Monday is September 28th, or you could meet midweek.
For the most part, I do not have a problem meeting midweek. I don't mind doing it. I actually rather prefer that. Breaks up the schedule a bit.
Midweek works better for me.
How about, uh, Counselor Allen? He's a working man.
Just set the date for 6:30, I'll be there.
Okay. And I don't mean that to mean that, uh, Counselor Wagner is working too. Sorry, Susan.
Thank you.
What about Wednesday, the 16th at 6:30?
I have grand jury.
Okay, um, Tuesday, the 15th?
That week I can't do. I have ju, grand jury, uh, Tuesday, Wednesday, and Thursday.
Oh, okay. So, how about?
Wednesday, the 23rd.
Yeah. The only conflict that would happen with that is if the Parks Committee decided to meet. That would be a conflict for JR, if you would have to choose.
And I'm presuming we're having this in person?
I don't believe so.
Oh, okay. Um, all right. It, can I ask if ev, if there's a way that everyone can participate visually? Because I think that's part of, for me, when we're talking about things like roles and responsibilities and things like that, having that visual response and being able to see everybody's faces, to me, is important.
I would prefer, uh, um, pardon me.
With the, Thursday, the 24th work for everybody.
I think the 23rd was fine, wasn't it?
Well, she's, she said unless the Parks Committee meets, but, but we don't know that yet, um.
I think they had an interest in meeting.
I'm currently in discussion with the Parks Committee about if they can get a quorum together to meet, and they are going to have their meeting remotely, if they do meet.
So, with the, Thursday, the 24th work for everyone. Works for me. JR, Bruce, Susan?
Uh, Mayor?
Yeah, go ahead, Counselor.
Um, as I said at the beginning of this, any dates planned by me.
Okay. Looks like we're all able to be...
I am not sure I'm gonna be able to make it the 24th. I may be out of town. That's just come up, um, as a potential out of town meeting for me. Sorry.
Mayor?
Yes, go ahead, any.
Uh, could I ask Counselor Allen, what's his choice? Would he rather meet with, uh, do this on the 23rd, or be at the, at his Parks meeting? I never did hear his.
I wasn't notified the Parks Committee was gonna resume.
Let's, let's assume they are.
Yeah, I'd like to attend the Parks Committee.
All right, then we're gonna have to find another week.
What about tomorrow?
I could do that.
That doesn't leave me enough notice, time to notice the meeting.
Yeah, that's true, yeah. I strive, JR, I appreciate it.
What about Monday, the 28th?
Yes, I can meet on Monday, Monday, the 28th.
Is there a reason we couldn't do the 22nd? That's a Tuesday. Except that we're meeting the night before for City Council.
Are you available on the 28th, Susan?
Yes, I am.
Everybody else available on the 28th? Okay, Dale is? Bruce is? JR?
Yep.
Okay. Let's set it up for 28th, 6:30.
Mayor?
Yes, go ahead.
I'd like to return to the question that, uh, the Counselor, um, Counselor Wagner brought up about, um, as opposed to meeting, uh, face to face, as opposed to the other, or other proposal, a Zoom meeting, or whatever they call it. I would prefer the face to face over that.
Go ahead, Stephanie.
Um, so, just a reminder that council had decided to hold all meetings virtually due to concerns of not being able to maintain six foot distances. If you guys are comfortable with meeting, um, you certainly can meet in person. Just know that, I mean, there's always, uh, the potential that a group of citizens will attend.
Oh, shit.
There's no state mandates that prohibit you from meeting in person, I guess is what I'm saying.
I, I have a question to ask, um, and that'll be the end of my discussion on this. We, we've met, uh, in person at different occasions, I think on our, um, I understand those were executive meetings, um, and they weren't open to the public, but, uh, the public is, right now, they have to, uh, use a phone-in method, is that correct?
Yeah.
So, if we were to meet face to face and they used the phone-in method, what's the issue with that?
They can use the phone-in method, but we must allow them to attend a meeting in person if you guys are in person. Obviously, our meetings aren't usually greatly attended, especially work sessions. I just wanted to voice that, since that was why I answered the way I did.
So, so if we, again, and not to belabor this, but if we do meet in, in open session, there's a, uh, ten person minimum, maximum, within that room, within what, whatever room it is?
Not for government meetings.
We still have to maintain the six foot, the distance requirement, and were we able to do that?
So, the last time I reviewed, uh, forgive me, 'cause this has been several weeks, the last time I reviewed the state mandates for government meetings, the biggest restriction as far as distancing and masks was that they had to be masked if you're in person inside of a building at this point, in any public spaces. It does not state that they must maintain six feet. All the main, all the orders state that if you cannot maintain six foot distancing, you must have a mask on whether you are inside or outside. What, it was a concern of council that we maintained that six foot distancing, and obviously as a courtesy to the public as well.
And, and with that said, I appreciate your information, um, and knowing that probably I'm standing out here on my own on this, so, um, I'm just gonna bow out from this from hereforth, so, I, I, I'll continue to meet with the phone.
Okay, so, are we in general consensus that we have a workshop on the 28th at 6:30 PM?
I agree.
Council roles and responsibilities. Thumbs up from Counselor Webb?
Agreed, for me.
Yeah.
I'm good.
Okay. City of Vernonia, COVID-19 CARES funding. Stephanie?
Before we get started, I want to make everyone aware that West Oregon has announced that there will be a power outage at 8 o'clock in select areas. At this point, it doesn't say the city of Vernonia, but as, um, everyone experienced last night, we did experience a blip, um, so I'm not sure if we will have a disruption of our meeting. Just a heads up.
Okay, thank you, Stephanie.
We can only hope.
Do you want to take that away then, uh, Josette, on the CARES funding?
Sure. So, I included a staff report, um, with the information about the federal, uh, CARES Act that made funding resources available to cities and counties. The city of Vernonia was allocated to $61,584.32 in the distribution of funding. Basically, I also then attached to the staff report the criteria by which the city, uh, needs to follow that criteria in order to request reimbursement of whatever their expenses are, use that CARES money. So, I talked to the mayor about this, because we knew of the CARES money when it first came out, um, and we looked into, and it's pretty specific, um, what it will allow the state, local, and tribal governments to use the funds for. There's just three points there, and then it goes in, the criteria goes into further detail on questions and answers, and what is and isn't, um, applicable to request funds. So, that's why I asked you guys to take a look at the requirements or the criteria, and then determine if there are any other specific needs. So, basically, to date, the city's, um, purchased some plexiglass, some kind of rolling clear barrier stuff that we use at the front of City Hall, two hand sanitizer stands, um, and then the signs for limiting the number of people on the docks, and then we paid the public works to install those. All of those costs together are under $500. So, if there's other things that you guys are specific and meet the criteria that we're not thinking of, that are necessity for the city, um, I did get an email from Ms. Pelster while, um, last week, and I did respond to her that currently, the way the funding criteria is set up for us, we can't take this money and make it into a grant for businesses, current way it sits. Um, I did discuss it with City Legal, like, is there any way around that? Um, and then I did find an article in The Chronicle that talked about St. Helen, and how they were requested to do the same thing, and they can't find a way, um, to set up small business loans or grants using, um, their funding. So, if someone knows of a way to legitimately do something else with the funding, I'd like to hear it, but I haven't found a way around these specific criteria that they outline.
Josette, or, go ahead, Dale, I'll follow you up.
Well, since we're doing online, uh, meetings, really not kosher for a lot of us to be using our own personal computers to do so, that not qualify as an expense for, um, the pads or even laptops or whatever, uh, I mean, would this be an opportunity to procure those items?
Um, it would. We could use it for that. We do have two, currently, we do have two laptops that any counselor can check out, and we have extra cameras as well, um, but we could do something like that. I just didn't want to buy something that's just gonna sit on the shelf if council's really not interested, and so... I just didn't wanna buy something that's just gonna sit on the shelf if council's really not interested, and so, we didn't, that's why I kind of sent it up to you guys, because if that's something council wants, that would be easily something we could request or buy and then request reimbursement for.
So, even if bought, the council chose not to use, would it still be an item that staff could use in the future? That way too, I mean, I wouldn't propose it to them that way, but I mean, like I say, I'm, I'm using personal computers for this, and, and even for my, my council email, and which we've kind of been counseled by is not the best thing to do, because if something comes up, they're gonna come and get my computer, so, um, so anyhow, that's an idea, and, and we can think about that.
Yeah. Thank you, Dale, on, page 12, um, I checked off about five different items that were eligible expenditures, and, uh, you, you had mentioned the cleaning supplies and the sanitizing supplies that we use, when, you know, as for example, shutting down the, the lake and the restrooms. I found one, uh, really interesting, uh, it's the second bullet, bullet point from the bottom, expenses to facilitate distance learning, including techni- technological improvements in connection with school closings to enable compliance with COVID-19 precautions, and when I attended the, uh, library committee meeting, I, I talked about this CARES Act, and Shannon was very interested in it, in fact, she might have got ahold of you, Josette, about this CARES Act, uh, funding for her, maybe some of the supplies in the library that would help the, uh, these students that are, uh, doing the distance learning this year, so.
She did communicate with me, and she had, she was out today, so she hasn't sent me any, uh, update of anything she would be looking to get, yet.
Yeah, so.
Well, just an FYI for, as it relates to,
Go ahead, Susan.
Thank you. Um, as it relates to distance learning, the school district does have Chromebooks that were donated uh, from Battleground for every student until our new ones arrive from wherever they're coming from on the boat that had to be turned around and drop off the persons who had problems with immigration, rules changing, and so they are, um, they're, they had to turn the boat around, drop some people off, and they're on their way back, uh, and will be here sometime in October supposedly. But I think that maybe something related to the library for additional services, sounds like that would be a great thing. The other thing I noticed, Mr. Mayor, if you don't mind my jumping in, um, the expenses for food delivery to residents, including, for example, senior citizens and other vulnerable populations. Um, that would be a really, really, uh, welcome thing, I believe, if there's a way that we could provide some subs- subs- subsistence to the food bank and senior center for that. Um, my concern about if there was a way to to provide loans or grants or whatever to local businesses is, my understanding is this money is for the betterment of the public good, not, and, and there is an argument to be said that when you've got a business in town, it's sort of betterment of the public and for the whole town, but then you are picking and choosing people who are going to directly benefit, um, as a business, not as a social service provider or a nonprofit.
Okay, thank you, Susan. Dale.
I have a question, Mayor, I have a question.
Uh, go ahead, Counselor.
Um, and I'd like to direct this at, uh, Counselor Wagner, because she sits on the school board. Um, I don't wanna put her on the spot, but, uh, as the school board is a separate entity, do they have their own method of recouping costs in terms of the distance learning? Or does it come through the, the city, or the county, or the state? Ultimately, it comes through the state, but.
That's a question for Mr. Miller, I'm not sure, I know that there's been some funds that have been received by the school district, but to what extent?
Didn't come through the city? That, that didn't come through the city directly?
Not that I know of.
Yeah, I, I just wonder if we're duplicating, you know, the possibility of duplicating something like that.
Okay, and so.
Same thing, probably, same thing would probably be said about seniors. They receive funding that's outsourced, sources that are outside, um, the city, as a, I direct this towards the, um, city administrator that, uh, comes through federal funding, state.
Well, I know there's still, the meals that they're doing that are delivery have not increased, they're, they are doing takeout meals, but the majority of seniors are coming and picking those up, so their meals on wheels numbers didn't increase, uh, anymore.
Right, so it's basically,
You could make a sale, but it, you know.
Yeah, I get what you're saying, it's basically at the same level. Uh, I just needed clarification, Mayor.
Yeah, go ahead. Okay.
I was just seeking clarification.
All right. And part of, oh, go ahead, Dale.
So, does this allow us to recover lost income?
If it's COVID-related.
Give me an example.
The lake, we shut the lake down to fishermen, we seen a significant decline in our parking revenues? And I think we can fill that on.
I seen something in there that it doesn't, uh, it doesn't allow for funds lost. Um, I was reading it this afternoon, and I'm not sure that you do.
Yeah, go ahead, Dale.
Hey, I'm just, just asking if that's another spot we could, we could hit there.
I don't think it does, I saw the same thing Bruce saw, and I'm trying to find it now.
Did, Josette, I have a, I have a question for you, did, did we budget in this year's budget for the, uh, new, uh, card machine at the lake?
You mean the upgrade to it?
Yeah.
Yeah.
That was in the budget then? Then, okay, that answers my question about, that's just an example about ineligible, so.
Yeah.
Anything that was not budgeted in, that was affected by COVID, I think is pretty much fair game, so.
It's over, over and above, cost incurred over and above.
Correct.
Um, you know, I, I hate to be the, the, the person that says it, but, uh, um, I, I would say this, whenever I look at federal funding or state funding, something like that, I tend to wanna think that, you know, this is tax do, taxpayers' dollars, and, uh, um, if it doesn't get spent, it doesn't just disappear, it goes back into the, into the general fund of the federal government, and, uh, we all bear the cost. So, it's, you know, I understand the desire to try and to, uh, capture as much as you can of it, but, uh, again, to me, it's, it's, uh, we have a responsibility, not only to the community, but to the country as well.
Well, we do have,
Go ahead.
Go ahead, Josette.
So, on the, um, Chronicle article, they did have a list of resources for businesses, different agencies that are doing this kind of grant loan opportunity through Business Org and and different things like that, so we could, um, you know, post the ones we know potentially are accessible for small business to address the community's, um, requests that came through Stacy, um, at least to kind of, and I did let her know that she should contact the county and Business Org and kind of, there's other places that are, have a different access to funds than this money and this stipulation, basically.
Can we find out, Josette, from other communities, um, maybe how they went about, um, utilizing this care, these care funds? Like, like SCAPUS, and I know they were allotted 216,000.
Um, yeah, so I know that, I, I can ask, uh, Booth, I know that St. Helen's used it for, um, equipment, technology costs, and then overtime. They had used their police force to do some of the mandate, um, making people follow the mandates, we did not do that, uh, but I could ask, see if there's something we're not thinking of.
Sure. Well, has there been any thought given to, um, maybe, uh, dividers in the chamber with plexiglass to make it a little safer, so we could meet in person, um, easier? Something to think about, I think, we have till December 30th to utilize the funding. So.
Mayor Hobart, can I chime in?
Yes, go ahead, Counselor.
At work, we track the hours for COVID, we've been doing so from the very start, for all the expense for disinfecting and cleaning. I've also changed out all the paper towel machines, soap dispensers, to all automatic, touchless, battery-operated. I think the city of Renonia, probably a good idea to do that in our, our, um, public restrooms and parks anyway, and this might be a good, uh, um, time to do that and get reimbursed for it. You can also, um, all the labor that we've been doing down the lake, helping with Susie disinfect every day, that hour a day could be, uh, an expense toward this. There's also fog machines on the market that do a really good job just spraying everything down, and it stays on there and kills the virus for, I don't know the exact amount of time, but I've actually used one, and they're really good for like interior vehicles and stuff, I know our Public Works employees share vehicles, so it might be a good idea to disinfect once in a while. Um, so a lot of that disinfection stuff adds up, comp sprayers, all the, all the materials and supplies needed, and the manpower to do so. Um, but I don't, you know, that's one thing I've thought of in along with what you said about, uh, plexiglass installation, so we can meet in person would be another good one, that's all I had to say.
Thank you, Counselor. Any other discussions? Recommendations for the staff?
Oh, sorry, Mayor, I had one more thing, you can also do faucets automated too, where you don't have to touch the faucets, you just have the water off and on, you know.
Yeah. Okay, any other discussion about the CARES funding?
So, I guess my, as from staff's perspective, is we do have, uh, hands-free paper towels everywhere, um, but we do not have the soap dispensers or the faucets, is that something you guys think you want us to go forward with? Because it's mentioned by one counselor, but I wanna, I don't wanna go start switching that stuff out if, if it's not really what council would like to propose, or, I don't know.
I'd like to see an estimate of what it would cost to do that, I think it's a pretty good idea.
Okay.
Counselor Webb.
Yeah, it's a good idea, but I, I'd like our public work staff to have some input on that, and, and as far as, you know, we put in this nice equipment, and we know how our restrooms are, they get vandalized. And so, if we're putting that in there, and it's getting tore up, and that cost again, I'm reluctant at that point, but, um, just, just need to think that part of it through, how vandal proof it is. And maybe with the time lock on the doors, that's not gonna be as, near as much of an issue, so, just wanna weigh that.
Okay, well, we can get from Shannon, and then get the estimates, and see if there's any other things that other cities have done that we maybe bring back to you guys and kinda mull over a little.
That'd be great, Josette.
Okay.
Yeah. Okay, I think we're ready to move on to, uh, cameras for city properties.
This one's from me as well, um, and I just attached the basic sheet that came with the different systems that Chief's been looking at, so, I know you guys know that some vandalism's been taking place at the gazebo, we're kind of having a rowdy crowd hang out, hang out down there, um, and do some damage to the property, so that's one site. The other one, being so close to the linear trail and kind of in a darker corner, is the new property, the Rose Avenue property, um, proposing, putting cameras on that. And then the sewer treatment plant had multiple batteries stolen out of vehicles on a regular basis, it doesn't matter if we lock it down, it doesn't matter, so, um, someone's figuring out the perfect right time to go there, either go under the fence, over the fence, and take brand-new batteries, so. We're proposing, um, that each of these will be paid out of the O and M for those different funds. Um, and the Rose Avenue building line item, so the two entities are on one meter for electricity and water sewer and gas. And so, since the city is the owner, we kind of made the executive decision, it's a lot easier for us to pay the bill and then invoice the two entities, so that we don't have to worry about water, gas, or electric not being paid on time, or then debating with each other who's saying what. Um, and so, Rose Avenue will have a section in upcoming budget, Angie's gonna put that in there in the supplementals to show you kind of add that in, because we have to add those in, um, when we're gonna be spending against them, and so it will have kind of those two entities also in their lease and their co-tenancy agreement kick into maintenance money and their rent, so that will be the income side of that. And then if we choose to divert some of that maintenance money into a reserve, that will be a budget discussion for council, but there will be a Rose Avenue section of the budget, in and out, um, for when we have to do things, and then when their monies come in and their maintenance monies come in. Um, they'll pay for things like HVAC and all that kind of stuff on their own, um, but it will be the city's contractor that does that. So, there's kind of, they're kind of a property we're gonna have to pay attention to in that way, different than. property we're going to have to pay attention to in that way, different than, I guess VCLC does it, but VCLC's been in our budget for, since it was built. So in the same way, VCLC is kind of how it will function. Um, so we're proposing to purchase these cameras. Um, so they'll just have the cost of the system and then the electrician time to install the city hall ones will just be pretty simple because there'll be a switch out of the system that exists currently. So just the camera heads and the lines exist in here. Um, Rose Avenue should be relatively easy because pretty much it's brand new and all accessible and no cobwebs or weird things to crawl through. And then, um, we're working with the seniors to discuss putting them on the scout cabin. They've had some issues too, so they're happy to um, have some cameras around their structure too, even though they will also point into Hawkins Park. So are there questions or concerns or?
I appreciate the fact that they're, that you're doing this. With as much technology as is available today, if we can afford to do it, I think it's really critical that we do. Having the higher quality that it looks like you're going to be able to capture the information you need to if you see someone or if someone does damage, um, I think is really critical.
Yeah, thank you, Susan. I, I did a ride along with the chief about two weeks ago for three hours. And Hawkins Park, the gazebo area was one of the places we stopped and got out and looked all around and looked at some of the damage in the gazebo and, and, um, there is a street light back there that is operating now. So that offers some help, but we both came to the conclusion that cameras would be really helpful in that area. And, um, so I'm, I'm totally in favor of it. Um, and uh, any other discussion about the cameras or questions for the staff?
I have a point of inquiry.
Go ahead, Counselor.
Is the chief here?
He is not on the call.
Oh, he isn't? Okay. I was just curious as to, this is investigating as to whether or not the use of it is evidence in, in the trial. In the past, I've known that, uh, the present camera system they had, they caught people on the camera, but it wasn't, uh, of a quality that, uh, they could ascertain within a reason of whether or not that, who the person was that would, that would suit, uh, a court of law. Maybe these cameras are much better.
Yeah, he's been researching him for about three months. So I feel like, um, I, well, I am not him to answer that. I believe these are the best we can get for the best price that would also allow us to see in the, in the dark because one of the issues is with our current cameras is there aren't as many pixels per square inch. And that kind of distorts a face and can make Jim look different than John, so to speak. These are going to be, from what he has said, these are going to be a lot more, um, granted, if someone's hiding their face, you're not going to catch them, but they're going to be a lot more useful, um, for the people that are kind of dumb enough to go up there and do something where we can see them.
Well, it says here, um, the city would access to review uses evidence of issue or crime occurrence. But I don't, I don't understand that. I don't understand that statement. Um, but then again, I, I don't know this is something that he drew up. Maybe it was.
You don't understand what statement?
The one I just, yeah.
So, so they won't have, it won't be like our current system, um, is a hard drive with a video monitor in the police department where you can rewind the whole day? This will store it and then we would pull that and review it here at city hall if something occurs. It wouldn't be the whole system like it is in city hall at Hawkins Park, at the sewer treatment plant, at Rose Avenue. It would be the simpler system that you would pull that data and review it in a different location is what I, what you meant by that. So say there's a broken thing at Hawkins.
I was just referring to the org use as past that, what evidence of issue or crime.
Okay. Any other discussion on the cameras?
Did you have a, a response to that, Josette, beyond what you'd already said?
No. So Chief and I worked on the staff report together. So he's feeling like if something happens, that's where we'll go. If, and double check, we can get the evidence to charge someone with a crime, basically. So I don't.
So it would be, so it would be used in the court of law?
Yes.
Seven hundred and ninety-nine plus electrician's time. It's that, uh, you have a clue what the electrician's time is? It just varies from point to point?
It does because like something like the sewer treatment plant is going to be simpler because, you know, it's newer. Scout cabin is probably going to be a little bit trickier. We may have to pull a new or another line. The newer buildings are going to be simpler. Hawkins may be a little bit more. And city hall is just going to be a switch out in the, switch out of the system and the police department.
Okay. Just again, as a point of inquiry, building line item, which is being added in supplemental budget, I think you spoke to that earlier. Um, I was probably looking at this other issue. Could you clarify that?
Yeah, so just like the V.
The Rose Avenue would be just a pass. Okay.
Well, but so more so that just like the VCLC is in our budget, it hasn't, it has income that comes in and rent and et cetera, and it has expense that goes out. Rose Avenue is going to be set up similarly.
So would the seniors be paying, uh, just to clarify that, the seniors will be paying for that?
So they have to pay in rent and then they also have to pay in, uh, maintenance fund each year. So the first year it'll probably be used for this and a couple other things, right, that we have to spend. But then in subsequent years, it most likely will go to a reserve. And in the extra, and that will all have to be done by council at the time of budget. You'll have to determine what you want us to, um, you know, pay for and all. They pay, currently they pay for the fire monitoring. They'll pay for, they pay for their own water, sewer, gas, electric, um, and telephone, communication. They pay for all that. They'll pay for all that themselves.
Thank you.
One, one other thing, um, we may be trying to see if we can either get a reduced rate or prior to pulling the trigger and purchasing these, whether our insurance has any deterrent money available for us to recoup any of these funds um, by purchasing something like this that would then help us with our insurance rate. So before we purchase them, we're going to double check. We can't get something similar to get something from the insurance company for doing something like that.
Yeah, we have in the past for upgrades to, to our security.
Right.
So does the council want to make a motion to move forward in purchasing of this, uh, security equipment? Go ahead, Counselor.
So prove that we purchased cameras for the city properties as proposed.
Motion's been made. Is there a second?
Mayor, I'll second.
Seconds been made. Stephanie, would you call the roll, please?
Counselor McNair. I'm sorry, can you repeat that?
Aye.
Mayor Hobart.
Aye.
Counselor Allen.
Aye.
Counselor Webb.
Aye.
Counselor Wagner.
Aye.
Motion carried.
Thank you, Stephanie. Vernonius Salmon Festival road closure request can be found on page seventeen, I believe. Josette?
Yeah. So this is from Sean Gibson. She's our vendor coordinator for Salmon Festival and this is typically, um, the request that Salmon Festival makes each year to close Park Drive. Um, from just kind of the everyday traffic, um, nine thirty AM and then six PM. Um, it opens back up. We wouldn't stop the local, the home that is there from accessing their property or emergency responders or disabled parking. But because so many people walk in and there's kids kind of running everywhere, it's just a safety, safety precaution to shut that section of Park Drive down.
Okay, thank you. Anyone like to make a motion to close Park Avenue for the Salmon Festival beginning at nine thirty to six PM?
This is Counselor Wagner. I am happy to make that motion.
Thank you, Counselor Wagner. Is there a second?
Counselor Webb will second.
Seconds been made. Stephanie, would you call the roll, please?
Counselor McNair.
Aye.
Counselor Webb.
Aye.
Counselor Wagner.
Aye.
Counselor Allen.
Aye.
Mayor Hobart.
Aye.
Motion carried.
Thank you. Walnut tree discussion.
Okay. So I go, I'll go ahead and start. Um, so as you guys know, we had the one big limb hangs over the highway, get brittle and break in a windstorm. Um, Public Works, the mayor and Weller got it out of the way and put it, put it uh, up against the tree there, the remnants. Um, the bigger discussion really comes from kind of an insurance thing, a historic thing, kind of what's our plan for the tree, um, going forward. Um, I did send you guys the report from 2017 that did outline that that limb and its crack is not the only thing. We did do some due diligence and removing kind of the weight that was described in that Arborist report. And we removed the limbs that were hanging over Myers, um, from hanging over at that time. Um, but staff just, because council is so involved in all of that and spending money on it back then, staff didn't want to just kind of free for all decide what would be happening with it. Um, one of the things that we didn't do in that report, or council at the time didn't want to do in that, from that report, was the resistograph testing. Um, so if council is interested in saving the tree or doing something to try and keep the tree in its placement, whether it's trim it and do some like piping or there's different ways to save it. Um, then potentially staff would want to have that testing done. I sent the Arborist the email asking if he had an estimate for that, what that kind of testing would cost now. And I haven't got, didn't get an email back before the council meeting. Um, but I think that would be a first step if we're interested in saving it. Before we spend the money to do whatever reparations would save it, we probably should check out, it's in a condition that's able to be saved by doing that further testing on the trunk and really identifying how much is hollow versus not. And that's just up to council.
Okay, I guess nobody's going to speak. I will. Um, so do you remember what the ballpark cost was to go in there and lighten it up in 2017? Uh, what, what that cost was? You got a, any idea?
Yeah, let me pull that up while you're talking, Dale. Um, I do have the email, I do have that invoice. Hold on.
So if we're going to save the tree, I think that's recognized, we need to go relighting the load again. And then we're going to have the cost of the wristograph. Um, whatever that's going to be. You can see it, it's rotting hard and, uh, I don't know, we, we, you know, how much money did we spend? We've already spent money to lighten her up once and it looked like it thrived grew rapidly again. So, and is there any historical significance of that tree other than it's just old?
Not that we can find from the city's perspective. I asked the school and it's not a memory tree or no one had a kind of remembrance of who planted it or anything. But the school people are new compared to, to the community, right? I mean, that tree is way older. Um, so in 2018, we spent twenty-three hundred and eighty dollars to trim it. And that was not even the full canopy. That was the parts that were hanging over the spots we deemed, or he deemed were most problematic.
Well, we would probably spend that at least again. Uh, it's got significant amount of overstory over Myers, which doesn't thrill me. And then there is that one leg out over the street that's got to come off. That's a real hazard. So, yeah, that's what we got to decide how much money we want to spend. And then I don't know what it's going to cost to put her on the ground if we decide to kill it. Um, but that wall, it probably got some value there. I know people are already asking about what's on the ground.
Yeah.
I did see in the, uh, report, Josette, the Arborist report in 2017 that on the south side, there was some, uh, rot, heart, heart damage and rot. And it's even more prevalent right now. Um, Mike Grant from Maple, Maple Crest Tree Service contacted me the day after that big limb came down in the north end, north side of the street, you know, over the phone lines. And he, he went and looked at it the first time and, and said he could, he could top it and lighten. And he went and looked at it the first time and said he could top it and lighten up the load quite a bit on the Myers side building and shape it up nice, and it could last for quite a while. And then, and then he went and looked at it the next day, over the weekend, and he called me back up, and he said, there's, it's split down to the cambium, and there's quite a bit of heart rot where I talked about on that south side. And he said, I could save the tree if you wanted to, but it could probably only be for about five to ten years, so. That's basically what we're looking at. I drove past it this afternoon, and the wind was blowing about thirty miles an hour, and in fact, the pylons in the road were flat on the ground, and I'm thinking, oh my gosh, if that big lead torch Gary's building come down, it would do some damage. He's a good tree man, he's been doing trees all his life, he's qualified under the power lines, and he knows what he's doing. Fortunately, the other day when that came down, nobody was parked underneath it, nobody got hurt. And I think we need to get warrants immediate action, I believe. So, I hope we can make the best decision for the citizens of Vernonia. The Arborist even said in his report, he's concerned about people walking along the sidewalk and parking there in front of, on the street, and that was back, that was two years ago, so. It's, it's an issue, and along with some other trees we have in the city, but I think we need to deal with this as quickly as possible. I know a lot of people like to sit underneath there and watch the jamboree parade, myself included, but it's, if it's going to be a big problem, if it's going to cost, I don't know, three or four thousand dollars to have some, somebody trim it up to save it for five years, I'm not so sure if it's worth it. And then, we have the skate park to think about, coming in the future, near future, hopefully, and we, if we put the money in, do it now to save it, who knows what's going to happen in another year or two, so. That's about all I have on that. Nothing lasts forever. It's a beautiful tree, but we sure don't want anyone to get hurt or anybody's property to get damaged, so. That's about all I have on it. Anybody else want to talk about it?
I know you've already said what the cost, the estimated cost that the pounding was, they're set on the basis. Could you again repeat it to me?
Estimated cost of which, Chris?
Resistograph.
He didn't have a, well, that was three years ago, and he didn't have, he didn't send me a new updated amount?
I see.
So, I was hoping you'd get back to me before tonight, so I could have a little bit more ballpark.
Mayor?
Yeah, go ahead, counselor.
Can somebody enlighten me exactly what a resistograph is? And also, a question for our city administrator, how much is this further testing going to cost by our tree guy out of Forest Grove?
Asked and answered.
So, JR, I don't know. I sent him an email today to get an updated description of what that costs, and I didn't get an answer back. And I'm, it's a test where it bounces off, does it sound or something, and lets you know what areas are solid and what areas are hollow. I'm not a scientist, so I don't know more than that. Anyone else know more than that? Dale?
Well, my assumption on that is conducting electricity, and dead wood doesn't conduct as good as live wood that has moisture in it, so they can, they can tell the live wood from the dead.
You can take a core sample and do the same thing.
Not sure this one's got a core.
It's pretty rotten, that south side's pretty rotten.
Well, if it doesn't, it'll, of course, it'll tell you that.
It's like a volleyball hole on the south side, at the ground level. I think the report said that they can probe in it, I thought he said. So, it was significant.
Well, to me, the question is, is the liability issue. You, one thing he says, he recommends that you do that test. We haven't done it. If we had a failure, catastrophic failure, went into that building, which is where most of the lean of that tree is, on that one side, I suppose insurance would probably pay for it, but you might possibly end up with a dispute there. So, it's apparent that at the very least, you're going to have to trim it back, which is going to incur costs, I think that's already been spoken about. The community is not going to be happy about it. The question is, is the responsibility is the council, what we do, for the benefit of the whole good. It's not going to be cheap to take it down, it'll be expensive. Either way, it's going to cost a lot.
I would recommend that we contact Mike Grant, and he could, he could let us know what it would cost him to save it, save it versus take it down, and get a figure from him, and then maybe go from there.
Mayor, I want to interrupt.
Yeah, go ahead.
Josette, don't we have a procedure for this?
Yeah, I mean, we would get, potentially, because it's public procurement, we get three bids. So, we'd say, we want to propose to lighten the load and save this tree, and get three bids for that. One other thing we could do ahead of that is, we could get back the resistograph cost, get three companies that do that testing, have them come out and test it, and then present you guys with the fact of whether or not it's something to be saved before we, I can do, I can do any or all. I just, I think if we're going to save it, we probably have to, for insurance sake, probably have to have that test anyway. If it's not, you know, over five hundred dollars, it's probably worth it, just for our due diligence. I just looked up online, I just Googled resistograph tree testing, and they're saying it's roughly a hundred-and-fifty dollars to do it, and twenty-five per site, so if they had to do more than one side or spot of the tree. So, if it's, if that's, and that was kind of like on a contractor's estimate website. So, I could propose that and find, get that testing done, if that's something council wants to do, and then, I think we could probably turn and burn it and get them back to you for the next meeting, the results, and then I could also go out and ask, you know, get some cost for taking it down and getting all the re-removed, and then some cost for saving it. Just ballpark, so you guys could kind of make a decision with all the information. And then we'd only be like two weeks from today, we'd keep the, put a little beefier barricade up there around it.
So, so initial cost would be a hundred-and-seventy dollars. Do they encourage us to come out?
That's, so, there's a couple of places, and you have to just basically request a consult or whatever. So, when I did the testing and put cost, it showed me on treeinspection.com, which is like, kind of gives you a ballpark for what the different people should be charging, and it says, a hundred-and-fifty is standard for a site visit, twenty-five dollars per drilling. It goes in a little bit into the tree when they do a section, plus the cost for a written report, extra charge for a report, if there is more than one spot, they go in. So, that's kind of just the start, right? Hundred-and-seventy-five is the start.
Counselor Webb?
Just to make a point, the cost of removal of the tree is always going to be there, it's that, whether we kick that can down the road, that cost will probably be up in the future, but, so, you know, I don't know if that's really part of the consideration. I mean, if we don't have a choice, you know, it's going to come down someday, and if Mike Grant's correct, it's only got five to ten years, we're just kicking the can a little bit. It seems to me the cost on that resistograph, if that's cheap, maybe, I mean, at least we're kind of covering ourselves a little there with the public. I mean, we're, make the attempt to save it. If the results are bad, I think it needs to go.
Can, can we find out earlier than two weeks from, from now, Josette? I mean, is there something, can we act on this quicker to get it tested on, on it?
No, I would have, my goal would be to have the results and have you guys discuss where, how to move forward at your next meeting in two weeks. So, tomorrow, I would get the three companies to give me an estimate, pick the company and schedule them coming to do it. But that's, I'm saying you guys as a whole have to discuss the findings and where you go forward, and that's two weeks, unless you did it at your work session or something, right?
Right.
So, that's what I meant, the two weeks, I was saying, get moving on it, but have more information within two weeks.
Okay. Counselor Webb?
Maybe shorten this up a little bit, because we could give you direction. Get it tested, if the test comes out good, get the cost to save it. And how much are we willing to spend to save it? I mean, if it's five grand to save it, Arborist is telling us only five to ten years, are we going to do that? Or if we trim it, and they say, yeah, it's probably going to be good for twenty, thirty Yeah, I just think we could expedite this a little bit, just give you some direction here. Test is good, we try to save it, if the cost is prohibitive, she comes down. I'm not comfortable spending much more than, I wouldn't be comfortable spending much more than four thousand dollars on that tree to save it, if the life of it isn't at least twenty or thirty years out, and we're going to need that opinion from the Arborist, which he's going to charge us more for that. If the test is bad, then we're just looking at taking it down, or what everybody else thinks.
Well, I agree with you, Counselor Webb, and every time I drive by there, specifically today, and I, and I see people walking down the sidewalk and stepping out in the street, and that big, big limb there, and I saw people snooping around it the other day, where, right underneath it, and it's just a safety hazard, as far as I'm concerned, and I'd like to see it at least cleaned up, and, I don't know, quicker than two weeks. I, I think we should move forward and make a decision tonight, and I like the avenue that Josette chose about getting the more information, and if it's not good, I think we should make a decision tonight, one way or the other.
What exactly do you mean by that?
Well, just what I said, I think it's the safety of the public is more, more, I think the public's at risk, just being around it, walking around that building, and the way it is now, and I'm trying to.
Well, I don't think, I don't think, I don't think anybody here is willing to compromise the public's safety. That, that goes without saying.
Right.
I, you know, I would like to say this, I spent my entire life in the process of taking trees down. I probably spent more time doing it than anybody in this council, and this is my own personal view. Trees have a certain intrinsic value, especially if they're in a community like this, and one as old as that tree is. Granted, if it's unsafe, it's obviously got to come down, and the cost of taking it down, I wasn't trying to say weigh that against the cost of trimming it up, or doing whatever it is that could possibly make it safe and possibly extend its lifetime. That was just that, I just wanted the council to know, having experience in taking down trees of that nature, that it's not a cheap thing. So, that was my entire goal. But I think that, to speak on behalf of people that maybe aren't represented here, again, I say there's an intrinsic value to those trees, and I don't, I don't think anybody here is being dismissive of that, but I think it's necessary to speak to them. So, it's just a thought. So, it's just a thought.
Okay. Go ahead, Counselor Webb.
Well, maybe we can narrow this down a little, a little closer for our staff. How much are we willing to spend to save the tree? I mean, yes, it has, has a value for the public, I, I appreciate it just like anybody else, but we also have to protect the public interest in how much money. I mean, is it, is it an open checkbook on this tree? I, I don't think so. And, and, and I, I think it just makes a simple decision process for us. If, if there's a dollar value we're willing to spend to save it, that's fine. But once we exceed that, then it's not. And, uh, I threw out four K, which to me seems, that's a lot of money to spend on a tree, but, uh, I think I'm being generous there to save this tree. But, uh, where are we at? I mean, is that what people want to spend, or is that too much?
This is Counselor Allen, can I chime in on this, Mayor?
Yes, go ahead, Counselor Allen.
I like the idea of getting the further test and then know what we're talking about as far as if it's even worth trying to save or not, and go from there. I would concur with that.
Those were my sentiments also, you guys. I, I didn't, I hope you didn't misunderstand me, but I, I just didn't want the situation to, um, carry on for another two weeks. I, I mean, I, hopefully we could, we could get an answer, have some data where, where we can make a decision before then, so that was my concern.
Understood, and appreciated.
Go ahead, Counselor Webb.
Well, this is kind of an A and B question here. We, we proposed that we'd go out and get it tested. Everybody's in agreement of that, we want to get it tested. If it fails, it's coming down. The B part of it is, we're going to be back here in two weeks. If we get a, we'll, we'll be back here in two weeks if we get a positive test that it's sound. Then another part of the question is, we're going to be right back at this, how much are we going to spend on it to save it? So...
I guess we'll cross that bridge when we come to it.
Why, why not cross it right now? Just give staff direction and, and we can get on with this. We're making this a longer process than it needs to be.
Well, then make a motion.
Are you guys ready then? Make a motion. I'll move to direct staff to have the walnut tree resistograph tested. If the result is, uh, that it's, that it's failing, it's a poor tree, then we just move forward with removal. If the test is that it's still sound, and in the opinion of the arborist, that it's got at least twenty years more of life, and that the cost to lighten up the load does not exceed four thousand dollars, then we will save it. If the cost is going to exceed more than four thousand dollars, we will remove it.
Is there a second?
I have a question. What happens if it's four thousand one hundred dollars? What if it's four thousand two hundred and fifty dollars? What if it comes in at four thousand and five dollars? I mean, it wouldn't, but I, I think that it, I think that this is, that this warrants a, a discussion after we find out what the test is. I guess that wasn't a question, that was a statement. It was a question and a statement.
So, if we can't get a second, I guess the motion dies?
That's your decision.
Oh, it dies?
It does. I'll ask one again, once again, is there a second to the motion been made? Okay. Motion not carried.
So I'll make a motion, Mayor. Am I recognized?
Yes.
I'll make a motion that, uh, we direct staff to do, uh, what the, um, city administrator outlined, to go forward with getting some cost estimates on the resistograph testing or core sample, whatever it be. And, uh, um, possibly after that, we'll determine where, where we go from there. At the next available meeting. I know that's kind of drawn out, let me see if I can do that again. I would direct staff that we do, I would make a motion that we direct staff to have a, um, resistograph, get, get the bids for a resistograph of the tree that we're speaking about. I'll second that motion, Mayor.
Okay, second's been made. Go ahead, Stephanie.
Yeah? Staff has a question.
Go ahead, staff.
So before we vote on, or you guys vote on that, I want to be clear that that motion, we direct staff to get bids for the resistograph, but not to have it completed. Is that what your motion, your intent of your motion was, Bruce?
I don't know how I would state it to, would I say that, uh, go forward and, and do a, uh, have a resistograph test done on it at the earliest possible date? I think there's a question on the, the cost of having that done.
You could put a maximum dollar amount to spend on it, no more than X amount of dollars.
Ultimately, Bruce, aren't we going to have to have it done anyway?
Yeah, I guess you're right. I, I, I think that you can do the same thing with a core sample. It's not as scientifically, um, complete, but if, if you do a core sample, you're going to figure out what you've got going anyway. I don't know if everybody's familiar with a core sample, but it's just somewhat, you just take a, an instrument that you screw into the tree at the base of it and pull the core, you pull a core out, and it tells you what the, um, you can count growth rings, you'll find rot, you'll find whatever. There may be an issue that it won't pull all the rot out if it's just slough. But, uh, I, I guess, to, to expedite this, uh, I would direct staff to have, uh, I would make a motion that we direct staff to have the base of the tree tested with a resistograph. Is that, is that better?
Yes, thank you.
Again, I'll second that motion.
Dale, would you go, go ahead?
Can I hear the motion, because I have questions?
The motion that was made.
Sorry, go ahead, Stephanie.
The motion that was made was to direct staff, staff to have the base of the tree tested with the resistograph.
So my comment is, I think that's too restrictive. What if the, whoever comes out to test says, well, the, the base looks okay, but I can see right here that there's a problem, but we've only directed staff to have the base tested. I'm not sure what the base is. Is the base the first foot? Is the base the first ten feet? I don't know.
So typically the resistograph test, I'm just looking it up here, they typically test above whatever cavities they can see. So if you just say, have the tree tested with a resistograph for health, we should be fine, and then they can do their due diligence themselves, and it's not on us where we say they should test it.
And are we setting a limit? A dollar limit?
Well, a motion's been made and it's been seconded, so we're looking for an approval of the motion, or yea or nay.
Uh, Mayor?
Yes.
I, I don't know if, according to the rules, but, uh, I think it's the person that made the motion, I can withstand the motion.
You, you, you're withdrawing your emotion, your motion?
Yes, to correct it.
Okay, would you like to go ahead and correct your motion, Counselor?
Is that, did I get a ruling from, uh, uh, the city recorder that that's possible to do that? I don't believe I've ever encountered it.
We're in uncharted territory, so go for it.
All right. So with your indulgence, Mayor, I'll try this again. And with the indulgence of the council, speak now or forever hold your peace. I'll make a motion that we have the tree tested with a resistograph for its soundness.
Is there a second?
Again, I'll second that motion, Mayor.
There's been a second made. Counselor Webb?
Offer an amendment to the motion, that staff also collects, he gathers the information of the cost to save the tree at the same time, so we have all the information back at once.
Then amended motion made?
The motion's been made and seconded, Mayor.
And I can propose an amendment.
Yeah, you can. But we can also proceed to vote.
So I will ask a roll call for the motion made, or... Stephanie, do you want to help me here? Do you want to, amended motion?
So if we're going to get technical here, Counselor Webb made a motion to amend the motion on the table.
Yeah.
That motion needs a second. If it hears a second, we'll vote on it. If that passes, we'll vote again on the newly amended motion.
Okay. So is there...
Going to go down this route?
Is there a second on the amended motion from Counselor Webb?
This is Counselor Wagner, I second that motion.
Stephanie, would you call the roll, please?
Could you, just for the, just for a point of, uh, clarification, what will be the motion then? That's being voted on?
So what I have is, well, okay, so what we're voting on right now is to amend your motion, so that, to direct staff to also collect the costs for, was it either removing or trimming it? Dale?
Removing the tree, the cost to save the tree, which would be the trimming and whatever other unpaid costs.
Or removing it?
If it's bad, we have to remove it anyway.
Okay.
So would you call a roll on the amended motion, please, Stephanie?
Thank you.
Okay, so this is voting to amend Bruce's motion. Mayor Hobart?
Aye.
Counselor Allen?
Aye.
Counselor Wagner?
Aye.
Counselor McNair?
Aye. Damn if I know where I'm voting.
Aye.
Motion carried. Okay, now we're going to vote. Bear with me. Going to vote to direct staff to have the tree tested with the resistograph for unsoundness, and for staff to also collect information on cost to save the tree. Okay. Counselor Webb?
So this is...
Counselor Webb says aye.
Do you want to have a discussion before you vote?
No.
Counselor Webb?
Aye.
Counselor Wagner?
Aye.
Mayor Hobart?
Aye.
Counselor Allen?
Aye.
Counselor McNair?
I, I, just for, I would say this before a vote, I have the, can do so. I thought that's what we were voting on first time, so, yeah, aye.
Motion carried.
Thank you, Stephanie. And the last item on new business was Susan's, um, topic. Can't remember what it was, I didn't write it down, I apologize.
I believe it was for us to nominate a project within the community the city's done.
For the LLC. Okay, Susan, I'll turn it over to you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So, I don't know how many you read your email, but on Thursday, last Thursday, we received a League of Oregon City's email, what's the coolest project or program your city has recently completed? Unfortunately, it's a very, very short nomination time, but, um, I haven't looked at the application, but the questions that they want answered are ones that are very, very straightforward. I think that the Senior Center Food Bank is a wonderful opportunity to, to submit this. The partnerships between the Birkenfeld Foundation, the Master Gardeners, the city, the Master Gardeners, the city, the state, the Columbia Pacific Economic Development Group, with Mary MacArthur being the grant person, and just everyone's involvement, I guess, Community Action Team, et cetera. I didn't even think about that till just now. But yeah, I would really like, if it's possible, for our city administrator to take a look at it at least and see if she thinks it's possible to submit a nomination.
It is a one-page, 250-word entry form. That's it.
Yeah, and of course, with council's agreement, I just wanted to make sure that she felt that that was something that she had time for. I love our project. It's fabulous. It really deserves recognition outside of this venue.
Does it have to be something that's of this last... Not to take anything away from what you were just doing, but just out of curiosity, does it have to be within this year? I'm looking at the email there real quick, like... Can you answer that, Counselor?
What, if you're asking about the wastewater project?
Well, yeah, just because I think they do this on occasion. I've seen this before.
Right, they do it annually.
So it probably is something that has to be done within the year that the project was completed.
Go ahead, Josette.
It says that it has to have been operating for at least the past year or have culminated in the past year.
And from my perspective, as wonderful and amazing as our hoodoes, et cetera, are, and slightly innovative, I mean, it is an innovative project. I'm not sure it would have the same attraction as the Senior Center Food Bank, which has been in process since 1985 and has taken thousands and thousands of volunteer hours on behalf of a lot of people to get it to where it is today.
Yeah, I was just thinking, Susan, that from a standpoint of, and this is just a conversational piece, that wastewater treatment was a program that, I mean, a project that came in under budget, that actually, we ended up lowering our utility rates. I mean, how often do you hear something like that? But this, the senior center's fine. I just was thinking about, well, next year, maybe we do that one, so.
Is that something you want to fill out, Josette? When's the deadline for the application, Susan?
Tomorrow. We can do it. Tomorrow's resistograph and application.
Is that the action item summary already?
And as a 250-word application for the nomination, that's a 20- or 30-minute project, I think.
It's going to start longer and then be revamped in the...
Just delete every other word.
Right?
For you guys, it'd take me a week to do that. You have my consensus to do it. Councilman McNair. Does it need a motion?
Need a consensus? Probably to move.
I think a motion, that way, if we win something, it's formal.
Okay. Anyone like to make a motion to?
I will, once the discussion is...
I think we're ready for a motion, any Counselor, or Counselor McNair.
Okay. I'll make the motion that we submit the Rose Avenue Senior Center Food Bank project for consideration for the League of Oregon Cities Award.
Is there a second?
I guess I'll second.
Second's been made. Would you call a roll? Stephanie, please.
Counselor Allen?
Aye.
Counselor McNair?
Aye.
Counselor Wagner?
Aye.
Counselor Webb?
Aye.
Mayor Hobart? Mayor Hobart?
Mayor Hobart votes aye. Aye?
Motion carried.
Thank you. Thank you, Susan. Business from the departments? None. Ordinances and Resolutions. Resolution 2020-11, harassment policy can be found on page 18 through 23.
This is a resolution brought to you, actually, by Ruben's roomie. There's not, it's just a pass-through for laws that were Senate Bill 479 that was passed by the Oregon State Legislature, just updating our harassment policy.
Okay, any discussions or questions? Anyone like to... Go ahead, Counselor Allen.
Yeah, this is for staff. I noticed in there some of the language. Is this an exact copy of what other cities are doing? Are we writing our own?
I'm bringing forward what was proposed by our city attorney.
Okay, and he's about two years too late getting this done?
No, actually, somehow this email managed to get lost in all of our inboxes. So staff, it was on staff's list to do in April, and then all of COVID, and then staff remembered and bringing it back now to get it done.
Okay, thank you. So it was written by our city attorney?
Correct. All I did was add a number and Mayor Hobart and my name. In September. Yep.
Anyone wish to make a motion to accept Resolution 2020-11?
I'll make that motion.
Okay, motion's been made. Is there a second?
No, I didn't make it. Okay.
Counselor McNair, you made the motion, correct?
I said I would. If you just wanted to move forward from there, I guess so.
Okay, is there a second?
I think we've got to read the title, don't we?
I kind of thought so, but I'm not going to stand on... Do you want me to make a motion, Mayor, that would... Probably motion.
Yeah, I asked somebody if they would like to make a motion to accept Resolution 2020-11.
Oh, okay, I thought you said that, never mind. It's a mix-up of trying to do this over... If we were face-to-face, we wouldn't have that problem. Anyway.
I understand.
I make a motion that we adopt Resolution 2020-11, a resolution of the City of Vernonia amending the city's current no harassment policy and statement of employee rights that seek to prevent workplace harassment.
Thank you, Counselor. Is there a second?
Counselor Webb will second.
Motion's been seconded. Stephanie, would you call a roll, please?
Counselor Webb?
Aye.
Counselor Allen?
Aye.
Mayor Hobart?
Aye.
Counselor McNair?
Aye.
Counselor Wagner?
Aye.
Motion carried.
Thank you, Stephanie. Moving on to correspondence. Grand opening, Vernonia Senior Center and Vernonia Curious Food Pantry. Josette?
So we're going to have a grand opening of the Senior Center Food Pantry this Saturday from 11:00 to 1:00. They're going to do a ribbon cutting and some acknowledgement of volunteers and people that supported them and helped them get this far. And then they're going to do small group tours and refreshments, individually served refreshments. Social distancing and masks required, so hopefully, everyone will be able to attend. And if not, I know you're going to be there in spirit.
Mayor, I have a question.
Yes, go ahead.
This is directed at the city administrator. Can you hear me, Josette?
Yes.
Will there be cake?
There'll be cupcakes because they're individual serving.
Cupcakes are good.
Okay.
Thank you, Josette.
So I brought you this... Yeah, from Jan Bernardi, I brought you guys this one also. I received this response to the response we had sent her about the property. And so, because it was titled to the mayor and city council, I put in correspondence. I don't know that there's a response to it. I think the city gave her the response that we're not interested in selling the property or leasing it, and that it will be used for potentially future access to the river or whatever the water plant would need in the future. And Stephanie has her hand up.
Would Counselor have liked to declare anything?
I'd like to declare a potential conflict of interest and refuse myself from this discussion at this time.
Okay, thank you, Stephanie. Josette, would you remind the council and myself about the the initial request and what our response was to Mrs. Bernardi?
Sure, so she had requested that we either sell her back or lease her the property that we purchased from her mother in 1986. She uses it for different family events. And we purchased in 1986 specifically for the water plant. And in that agreement, we agreed that Eleanor Thompson can have use of the property to board her horses or pastor her horses there as long as she's living. And so she's still alive, and the city doesn't currently have a use, but is probably not interested in giving up that property because the river could change. We may need to do a different intake. There's lots of things. I'm well aware that we will not build a building in the flood plain, which I think is what Ms. Bernardi was, thought I was confused about, but I'm not confused about that. I didn't say in expanding the Water Department that that means a building. That could mean a multitude of things in treating the creek and making it drinkable water for our community. So... That's what I know about that. And there's nothing currently that prohibits them from accessing that property right now.
Okay, thank you.
Mayor, can I chime in on this, please?
Yes, please.
This process is probably for Josette. Is there any issues with the current agreement? I mean, is there any problems with what's been going on?
Problems like with accessing the river there?
Yeah, I mean, has it been an inconvenience to the city?
No.
Okay, and how would it be an inconvenience in the future if it was extended, so to speak, the same agreement without selling or transferring title?
So currently, the agreement was never with the Bernardi's. It was with Eleanor Thompson only. They are her relatives, so they're the ones that currently have access. But I believe if we were to extend the agreement, there would be a problem with the generations below Eleanor Thompson, multiple people wanting that access.
Different families, you're saying?
Yes.
By marriage, is that what you're getting at?
Different descendants of Eleanor Thompson have already expressed that they are interested in that, and they are not from the same family.
Got it. Okay, thank you for that clarification.
Okay, any other questions or discussions?
Yeah, Mayor, this is Councilman McNair.
Go ahead, Bruce.
So we have an agreement that's in force right now with Mrs. Thompson. She's still with us, bless her. And I don't know why we would enter in discussion with someone that... She has not made any effort to contact the city about this issue, has she?
Eleanor, no, she has not.
And from everything I know, she seems pretty capable of doing so still. So... I don't think we should be crossing bridges until we come to them.
And so, out of respect, I can respond to Ms. Bernardi that our original statement in the first letter still stands or something to that effect?
I would say so.
Okay.
That's my opinion.
Is there consensus of council that I respond to this letter as well?
Yes, please.
I agree.
Yes, from Counselor Allen, Josette. Is he going to respond with the same exact letter? Or are you going to respond with a... or are you gonna respond with another letter?
No, I would respond that I received her follow-up letter and that, you know, the Council's, um, still would like to keep the property as we stated, you know, something to that effect.
Right, and that we still have an agreement with Eleanor?
Yes, that is, there is currently, yep.
Perfect. I'm in agreement. Thank you.
Okay, move, thank you, Josette. Moving on to the letter from Tim and Don Titus.
So, staff received this letter as well, and it was to myself, Mayor, and City Council. Um, I don't really know if there's a response to this letter, um, because it's not, nothing that's happening there is not happening outside of what's allowed, how it's plotted. We're holding builders accountable for cleanup and follow-through and all the things that they're, so I think it's just a frustrated, um, community member because for a long time I believed the property was green space and everyone got used to it like that. And now builders have been purchasing lots and building homes up there, all the while following all of the expectations that we have in Title IX and the land development code. Um, I think it's just not what they would like. So, I don't know really how to respond. Um, I don't think there's much we can, what we're gonna say is probably not gonna satisfy this person. But nonetheless, it was addressed to you guys, so I wanted you to see it.
Yeah, uh, Mayor?
Yes, Counselor. Go ahead, Counselor.
I would direct a question to the City Administrator if she can hear me.
Yep.
So, is there anything illegal that we, we could even do?
No.
I would.
Melanger, the county road, um, and so ultimately Louisiana being paved, um, may solve a little bit of the dust problem. I am not legally, I don't wanna get into their version of what someone's building up there. I don't know for a fact that their statements are even true about cheap building and so close together they're following the development code and having those setbacks that are required by the development code for that zone. So, I think we'd kinda be stepping in if we start answering, uh, their complaint, other than to say the current developers as well as future developers will be held to all of the requirements within Title IX.
I guess that's basically what I'm saying, that we can sympathize with them, but then there's really nothing, that they're following all our existing rules and it's within the city limits. Um, you know, what are you gonna do?
Counselor Webb, did you have another?
Yeah, another conflict of interest.
Potential conflict of interest you wanna declare? Yeah.
I just wanted to get that on the record, potential conflict of interest.
Did you catch that, Stephanie?
But I'm gonna reclude myself from this discussion because of that.
Did you record that, Stephanie? Did, did you record Dale's potential conflict of interest?
Yeah.
Okay, thank you.
Did, did Dale refuse himself or is he still in the discussion?
He recused himself from the discussion because of a potential conflict of interest.
Yeah, I, I heard the first part. You hear the refusal. And I didn't know if he had. I'm not questioning whether he did or not, I just.
Would you guys like me to respond that anyone building up there is being required to follow all of the land use rules and all of that? Is there anything else that you feel we need to address? I mean, I don't wanna step in it with what their problems are with the builder. I don't wanna get into that, but that we're gonna hold anyone building up there to the standards as outlined?
What?
I think that would, I think that would be a fair response to the Titus', Josette.
Okay.
I have a question, Mayor.
Yeah, go ahead, Counselor.
I'm not sure if anybody can answer it, but the traffic being diverted to a county road, does the county have to buy off on that?
Buy off on the homes?
Increased traffic from Melanger Road.
No.
Um, Louisiana was a platted, platted road.
Say that again?
It said Louisiana was a platted road, wasn't it?
Yes, it was platted in like the 1930s.
And it goes all the way to Melanger, right?
Yes, it does.
So...
Josette, wasn't the city talking about having a grant to pave Louisiana and open that up?
I don't know that it, there was a talk of paving it, um, until it was more fully built out, um, or what we currently do for anyone facing Louisiana is they have to sign a waiver of remonstrance to participate in an improvement district down the line. But down on the lower section, it is not actually in it, the gravel road is not in the platted Louisiana. So, what we had discussed with Public Works Committee is straightening out that weird bend where it, um, kinda goes out of its lines a little bit. And over history's time, it's gone out of the lines a little bit. Um, and then, I don't remember where the opening it up, but that was a discussion point in the past. But it never was like a push to come to fruition.
Well, it was on the wish list.
Well, it really needs some surveying done and getting it back in and doing some preparing the base and stuff like that where it goes out of the bend before you'd open it up. And because there's no homes being built down there, no tax base coming in currently, there really wasn't the motivation to spend money ahead of, uh, tax base increasing there.
Well, just to add, if I could be, if I could say something here, Councilman Allen, I was a liaison to the committee at that time, um, and my memory is vague, but, uh, don't you reach a certain point, a threshold, uh, Josette, where, um, like 50% or above there, the build-out, then you, you commence with the project, with the letters of remonstrance. Um, then you commit, then you commit to the build-out, the building of the, I mean, the project.
Yeah, it's usually, um, not so much specific to a percentage, but it's in the SDCs that you're collecting, and you can increase the capacity, then you would do that. You would open that and increase that capacity using funds that, as the homes are being built in the area, you're kind of stocking it away in the, in the SDC fund.
Yeah, I think that, that was a question, maybe that term, the percentage was just something that was giving the committee an idea of when you would begin that process.
Right.
And, and we're in the process of that right now. That, um, that will continue to build up there.
Right.
Patience.
Okay, thank you. So, we did, did we get a general consensus from Council to move forward with a re, re-sponsor or a letter from the City Administrator then? I think we did, yeah.
Okay, by me.
Okay, are we ready for a City Administrator report?
Sure. So, since you all have it, I'd rather just answer questions than read it verbatim. Do you have specific questions on the different categories or other questions? I mean, I can read it, but since you've all had it, I don't think that's necessary.
I wanna say thank you for including it in the packet. That was awesome. Thank you.
Yeah, I think I'm gonna just have that be the way it comes, uh, while we're teleconferencing. Might not have everything as up to date because of that, because it will be five days ahead of the meeting, but for the most part, it'll have everything that I got up to the Wednesday before.
So, we probably spoke about this, but, uh, your lowest qualified bid came in $16,000, and that's depending, uh, how much sheathing, what, oh, you're saying additional $2,000? $18,000? What did we budget?
In that line item, Bruce, and it included a couple other things. Let me grab it.
Okay. Well, I, I just was gonna, I wanna put you.
Let me look it up here. Hold on.
It's gotta be done, so what the heck.
Um, so we had 20, um, in the proposed expense.
Oh, that's what you had, had, had estimated for the cost of doing that?
At 20. 20 is within the total expense coming out as, as, out of park maintenance reserve. Remember, that's how we're tracking projects.
Right, right.
That's what we slated in there for 2021.
Oh, so that was, and what were the other projects?
I think there was a, a couple little things. They're not listed on here. I, and this is more detailed than mine, but I didn't write them down. And I don't think they're in the, let me look in the front. They're not in the front sheet of it.
Yeah. Um, I, I understood that we were going, this exceeded what we had originally, um, for what would cost.
It may have exceeded what we had planned in a past budget, but not in this budget.
Oh, okay. Well, then there's no issue.
Yeah. Any other questions?
Dale, go ahead.
So, on the, Josette, by May, the emergency preparedness container staging. So, I see we've decided to go to the lake, and I concur, that would make a great, probably a better place than up there on the lagoon siding, 'cause of distribution issues. Um, only concern I have is, does this container need electricity or something? And I see we're talking about putting it, uh, moving, moving the host trailer closer to the trail, and how do we hook up her electric and her sewer if it's in between?
It does require electricity. They have money in the grant to pay for that upgrade, and we'll be putting a conduit in the ground that her electricity, uh, line will go through, that the connects would then be placed on top, and it'll be widened up to get the whole outlet through. So, we're just digging a ditch, placing the conduit in there where we can feed her line back through. 'Cause really it's 10 feet, right? I mean, the, the length is going parallel to her trailer. The width is the 10 feet. And the, and the grant pays for that. That's, that's fixed to the system.
How close is that gonna cover her on the trail? Is that gonna be an issue?
It only puts her, it only puts her 10 feet closer to the trail than she is right now.
I don't have any more on that.
I guess I said 12 feet in my report. 10 feet, 12 feet. Oh, Dale's got something else.
Dale, go ahead.
So, how are we coming on the Nickerson Ridge project? Uh, I see we're pushed back to the end of October, but are we, are we gonna outperform that number?
Well, so our goal was to get, the real thing we wanted done ASAP was the dirt moving on the lots that are sellable. And I haven't got a today update on that. Um, Dawn came and marked where all the catch basins, the survey for all the catch basins. Um, I think we're waiting for a couple more of the catch basins. They were backordered for the road that'll go in the road, but he had the ones that were gonna go in the properties, lot properties. And then all the piping's there, so hopefully we'll be there before the rain at all comes, so. Even if it means that the sidewalk along Lot 1 is just a gravel base temporarily, depending on the weather, that'll be kinda weather-dependent, getting that sidewalk repoured over it. So, from the corner of Nickerson back to Lot 1, that sidewalk that's failing is gonna be removed, and that's where the piping will go. And then we'll have to repour that. We may not get that repoured before wet weather, and then we'll be kind of weather-dependent to put it in right, if that makes sense.
Josette, I have one other item concerning the container for the preparedness.
Yeah.
Um, location. This, this is just a thought. Um, possibly the, the lot, the city lot, between the Health Center and the Senior Center building, it's a level gravel, gravel parking lot. That's, uh, could be another consideration for that container. Um, there's power right there. I mean, they, where the five-star builders put their where the five-star builders put their, their work shed and they metered off of the three-phase line there. Um, it's just something to think about. Maybe comparing the two locations, what, what may be easier? That's definitely out of the floodplain and it's a nice flat gravel parking area that we own.
Yeah, we did, we did look at that. One of the reasons that we kind of deterred away from it was just kind of the image as you come into town. Like a Conex sitting there by itself, kinda seems something to be desired. The other thing is because the only access we have to it is off the highway. If we were doing distribution, you'd have people coming in and out right there off the highway, which might get some of them, and it's what ODOT wasn't gonna allow us. They, that's why we needed to buy that parcel from Westo was because we need an ingress or egress off of Cougar, which we don't currently have. So those are some reasons we didn't go for it.
Okay, alright.
Yeah.
Anything else for the city administrator?
So just a couple of issues there on the, that's a sewer issue update. We talked about that this afternoon. Um, Josette, I'm, um, can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, um, so you're basically waiting for the, the um, survey to be done. You haven't done any preliminary work on how you're going to go about getting um the area cleared for the project.
No, no, we, we're looking into kind of ownership, what's up there, value, and the, and the formal survey marking those edges of the property.
Okay. How are you gonna go about that? Do you have an idea or is this just? Go about the whole process there of uh determining the value, um, how much you're gonna have to take? Are you going to have a consultant do that or how are you gonna do that?
Are you talking about taking the trees down or the, the legal eagle part?
Well, the legal eagle part, I'm, I'm sure you're gonna do with the um, the
Ruben.
How we do, yeah. Um, you haven't uh formulated any ideas on it's just gonna be your basic uh um, project.
Yeah.
Okay. The other thing is, is that uh in the equity meeting that we never did set up, are you go, are you the designated reps on that for the, the city's side?
Um, myself, city recorder Borst, and Chief Connor.
I was asking whoever would bring us back information um concerning the meetings.
Well, we're, the goal is to just bring you back a draft resolution that's palatable for what the city can actually accomplish in a resolution. And stay away from things or promises that really the community as a whole needs to take on. So that's all we'll be bringing back. We probably won't bring back a play-by-play, so to speak, because we're kind of going through a lot and discussing a lot of stuff that doesn't um, isn't in the city's kind of purview, if that makes sense. We're really trying to keep that group. Go ahead.
I, I, I was just headed towards where the final uh deal, is it an up and down vote?
No, it's a draft. So we're gonna propose a draft to you and you guys are going to ask questions about it, potentially tweak it, talk about what, what worries you about it, if there's things that worry you about it. It's not like a bring it and you have to pass it or fail it. We're gonna bring you something that then we'll have more discussions.
Right, I either, we may have had discussion about that and, and I wasn't paying attention or it wasn't there or um, I didn't know how that would end up. That it was just either an up or down.
That's the plan anyway.
We would have some input is what I was trying to get at.
Yeah, I mean, we're hoping that we bring you something that's, that's useful and can make a statement that won't have a ton of um, tweaking, because that kind of will have been fleshed out with all the community members and we kind of know what other cities have done and what's caused other places complications, cause it's really not uh, there's not an achievable kind of benchmark or what does it look like if you succeed in this resolution? We're gonna really put some real elements to it that's not just fluff and stuff, basically, Bruce.
Yeah, I just was wondering what my expect, what the expectation for, my expectation. What was that expected of me as a council member?
Yeah.
Um, that's all I have, Mayor.
Okay, thank you, counselor. Anybody else have any questions for the city administrator? Thank you, Josette. Items from the mayor counselors.
Are you gonna start, Mayor?
Um, go ahead, Dale. See, you had your hand up.
Yeah, I just wanted to reiterate kind of your opening statements there on preparedness and uh after sitting and listening to the scanner of Marion County deputies pulling people out of houses last night up there in the San Diego Canyon and and people that were not prepared to evacuate. It was, those deputies were being told by their commander at quarter to three in the morning. That's why I've been yawning so much tonight. But you had fifteen minutes to exit the area. There was trees starting to fall down in the roadway. They were gonna get trapped in there. And there was still people calling up from within the area that had given notice at nine o'clock in the evening. Uh, and they'd been given notice the day before that they were gonna be evacuating probably the next day. But they're still calling up. I need assistance. I need help, you know, and, and uh you know, for our community members, if, if we get to this, if we, heaven forbid, ever get in this situation, and we could. Are these fires are monsters and we don't seem to have the resources to control in these conditions, that, you know, people need be prepared. They need to react and not put our, our staff, our services in, into these bad situations, so. Um, there, there's a woman up there next to Detroit Lake. I don't know if she ever got out. They went in with a front-end loader to try to get her out and they couldn't get to her. So that, and that's the last we heard of it. I mean, they had to give up, so. I expect to hear some, I expect to hear some grisly news from some of those fires in that area, so, next few days.
I, I can add that the experience that I had as a young man, I was in my, like, twenty years old. And uh, we had a fire down on the coast, a fairly large fire in an old gross stand of timber. And you literally, it went over the top of us. It, it uh crowned and went over the top of us. You were literally down on the ground trying to get a breath and it's almost next to impossible to do. It's probably one of the most scariest situations I encountered. Um, if you uh, y, y, you don't have an idea what it's like being there and had it happen to you. Um.
I can attest to that, Bruce, cause I was on the same fire, if you're talking about the seaside fire.
Yeah, yeah. We were, we were there uh the night before you guys came down and we got caught on a landing down there and went over the top of us. And uh, they lost the fire wagon and
Yeah.
we managed to get out, but it's uh, there was fire on both sides of the road going over the top of us and it was again, like I say, it's so confusing. We literally, anyhow. Um, I do have one item I'd like to address, Mayor.
Go ahead.
Um, Thursday, the cemetery committee will be meeting up at the c- uh cemetery. Um, so that'll be our first meeting that we've had in months. And uh, it will be um, a face-to-face meeting. Fortunately, it'll be outside, so we'll be able to space and, um, and the columbarium will be put in as of Thursday. So, um, that's a milestone for the, the cemetery. Um, I uh urge everybody to come up there and look at it after Thursday. I think uh, we'll all be impressed.
Thank you, Bruce.
You're welcome.
Look forward to seeing that.
I am too, Mayor. I'm happy, look forward to it. It's almost as good as the, the um, success that we had on the wastewater treatment. And the, that beautiful building that we just completed down here.
Dale, go ahead.
Um, I just wanted to check, Josette, are we square on the, on the crack filler or did you want me to come down?
Um, it'd be great if you come down so we can just double, triple check what we're all on the same page about. Cause we, you and I didn't get to pull up the website and do that real quick. That'd be great.
Okay, I'll, I'll come down tomorrow.
Okay.
You gonna be there in the morning?
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
So, so what's that involved in? I know what you're talking about, but fill us in a little bit. Are you guys gonna make, see, know what you're gonna buy?
Yeah, so we had discussed it last year and then it got put off until budget and then we put the money in the budget and now we need to double, triple check what we all agreed to last year.
Right, right. But we're gonna come to some sort of conclusion.
Yeah, I pulled up the websites. I just need to double check that I'm on the same page as everyone with what I have lined out to purchase.
Uh, okay, and we'll, we'll come to a conclusion and, and go forward from there, huh?
Yeah, well, once, once, hopefully we, what I have picked out is what we all talked about and then we just purchase it.
Good, good. Will we, will we have enough time to utilize it?
Hopefully, depending on how quick it gets here. Knock on wood.
Yeah. Well, that's, that's good to hear.
I'd like to take this opportunity to, to thank Dale Webb for his um, monitoring of the weather conditions and uh the, the smoke conditions and, and everything that help us keeps our community safe. Uh, thanks a lot, Dale, for all you do. I know you were up late last night and it's very much appreciated by the entire community. Um, thank you for what you do.
Here.
Anybody else have anything? Okay, we'll move on to action item summary.
Okay, so what I have is that we're going, Seth's gonna talk to the library about additional services the CARES Act funding could be used for. We're gonna get some price uh estimates on automatic soap dispensers and the automatic um faucets to bring back to council to see if that's something. Um, we're also gonna look to make sure if, see if we can't find a more vandal-proof version um in those estimates. And then look at what other cities have used in case there's some ideas there we haven't thought of. Um, as far as insurance, we're going to um, check with them to make su, see if there's any money available for our idea of purchasing cameras that will deter vandalism and probably decrease our insurance costs. And if so, apply for that um ahead of purchasing the cameras. We're going to get three uh bids for resistograph testing and get that done. We're also going to look into um some bids for the cost of saving it, saving the tree and what that would be, so we have all that information for you guys. Um, we're going to respond to Mr. and Mrs. Titus's letter and Mrs. Bernardi's letter. And we're going to apply for the, uh League of Oregon City's Award of Excellence by the end of, by tomorrow. Anything else?
Anything else, anybody? Well, just say, say, go ahead, Al sir, Mayor.
I have one more item. Um, I would ask that the city administrator make sure there's sufficient cupcakes at the grand opening.
Got it.
Thank you.
He finds sufficient.
You'll know. You better get there early.
Nice, too.
What was that?
She wants a keto-friendly cupcake. I don't know what that looks like.
Actually, I've been making some pretty good muffins and, and biscuits and stuff. Found some good flour, actually, so there you go. Maybe I'll make myself a cupcake.
There you go.
I'd like to announce that after the um opening ceremony for the grand opening for the senior center, I'm going to have an unveiling of my Washington grade school bench underneath the new kiosk next to the monument at one o'clock. So, welcome everyone for that unveiling. Hope to see you there.
Mayor?
Yes.
Will there be cake?
Oh, I doubt it. Hope you can make it though, Bruce. It's pretty cool.
I'm, I'm available.
Okay.
I'd be more available to get cake.
I know you would. Just bring your mask.
Oh, you mean the one for the COVID deal, okay.
Yeah. Well, if there's no other topics, I'll adjourn the meeting at ten, ten PM. Meeting adjourned.
Thank you all.